All right. We'll let the record reflect that meetings reconvene with all members present. Please rise for pledge allegiance.
... To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have pushed the minutes for February 27th to the next meeting so we can have a motion for the executive minutes of March 12th, 2012.
I move that.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Lynx.
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
Welcome all, and I apologize, we were running just a little bit late tonight, but got here fairly close to the eight. A few announcements, a few proclamations. One, I think we'll probably hear some more about this, it was a very busy Saturday in Madison, and we had the annual Little League Parade. The weather held off very nicely, and it's a great, an impressive sight to watch Little Leaguers march down Main Street and then go to Dodge Field, and there's a lot of little kids playing sports, so it's great to see. And then at 3:00, we had the ribbon cutting for the MRC field, and that was another great event, and I thank Jim Burnett for his work putting that together, and also Dave Carver with Girls Softball, they scheduled their picture-taking around the ribbon cutting, so it was nice to have a captive audience. A great celebration, as was mentioned on Saturday, it will be another celebration of a dedication at a later time. I had on my notes from last week to talk about water restrictions, just because we had a heavy rain doesn't mean that we shouldn't change our routine, but just a reminder, there are no mandatory restrictions, but you'll do a whole lot for our water levels and the environment if you use your water judiciously, you know, odd-even watering, and remember that grass does bounce back nicely, so a little Darwinism on your side yard or backyard as I do is not a bad idea. Also, I got an email today from the league municipalities, a few meetings ago, we announced we had a resolution supporting the Hire Our Heroes, which is to have jobs for our returning veterans, and they were very proud to announce that on Wednesday, September 12th, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., in Trenton will be Hiring Our Heroes mega-job fair, so, and it's going to be at the Sun National Bank Center in Trenton. Be more information coming, but it's, I think, for those that are in need to hire, you might want to find information how you can participate in this job fair, and if you know veterans that are looking for positions, that'll be a good thing to target, but it's a great event. For the library, there are two upcoming opportunities for technology training. You can call the front desk to make reservations, the phone number is (973) 377-0722 and extension 210. On Wednesday, April 25th, at 7:00, the Logging for Beginners, and then on Friday, June 1st, which is a great use of our high school students and providing a service, it is the high school days, high schools' day of service, and students will be at the library to help adults develop basic computer skills, including email and using digital cameras or a cellphone. So that's June 1st in the morning, and then Logging for Beginners, April 25th, 7:00 p.m. I have two proclamations. Come around here as I like to do. This is for National Donate Life Month, and I don't think we have anyone here, so my policy is I kind of hold awareness that they're not going to show up, but this is still a very big cause. We sent the official proclamation to Plankville Mayor Sharon Robinson Brink, who had an event this past week to promote Donate Life, and basically the proclamation is to reaffirm our commitment to raising awareness about organ donation and importance of making a decision to donate. We also, to its appreciation for those who have donated organs, tissue, and marrow, and to note that 100,000 Americans, thousands in New Jersey are currently on the list for organ or tissue transplant. We urge New Jersey residents, if you haven't done so already, do it now or certainly next time you renew your license, to say yes to organ and tissue donation on your driver's license, and what's also very key is to share that decision with your family and friends. And so, month of April, National Donate Life Month, we celebrate the life-saving work of medical professionals, researchers, and the many others whose actions reflect our commitment to a brighter tomorrow, and individuals can visit www.donatelifemj.org to learn more about organ and tissue donation and how they can give the gift of life. Another proclamation, and we've stuck this list in here, I don't think our borough clerk is aware of this one, because she's on top of everything, but we want to declare April 29th to May 5th, 2012 Municipal Clerks Week.
Here you go.
When you see this, you really get to see a tip of the work she does. So whereas, and come on over here, this, a little gift, roses from Rose City. So whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of our local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk provides professional link between citizens, local government bodies, and agencies of government and other levels, almost serving as our lightning rod, whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be evermindful in neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas, municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas, it's most appropriate, we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk, notably Elizabeth Osborne and Patty McElloso. So therefore, by Robert Askey, the mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby recognize the week of April 29th to May 5th, 2012, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend our appreciation to Municipal Clerk Elizabeth Osborne for all her municipal clerks and all the municipal clerks and vital services they perform, and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Thank you.
Good job, Liz.
I'm glad you're here, to work with everyone, and thank you.
You need those flowers back.
But now I'm gonna eat them.
You want to come over here?
I think you better. Thank you.
Can you say?
Yes. Feel good there.
That's gonna be a new tradition.
You might have to.
Reports from committee, public safety, Ms. Tsukamoto.
Yep, thank you, mayor. This Saturday, April 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Madison Police Department and the Drug Enforcement Administration will give the public another opportunity to prevent pill abuse and theft by getting rid of dangerous, expired, unused, and unwanted prescription drugs. Please bring your medications for proper disposal to the Madison Police Department at the Public Safety Building on Kings Row. This service is free and anonymous, no questions will be asked. This initiative addresses a vital public safety and public health issue. In addition, I would like to remind our residents that the usual methods for disposing unused medicines, which are flushing them down the toilet or throwing them in the trash, both pose potential safety and health hazards. The Madison Police Department responded to 2,455 calls for service during the month of April so far. Officers responded to and investigated 43 motor vehicle crashes, they issued 272 motor vehicle summonses, made five driving while intoxicated arrests, and investigated 23 burglary and/or theft complaints, and 66 suspicious persons and incidents. The Fire Department has completed 16 hours of confined space training last Monday and Tuesday. The training was conducted at the training facility in the Public Safety Building and at the Candlewood Pumping Station. Anyone interested? There were some dramatic rescue photos that I took, which I'm willing to share with everyone if you're interested. Also, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the anonymous donor of the pet oxygen masks and Reader's Device to the Fire Department. We thank the donor very much for their generosity. Also want to report that Mr. Landrigan has filed over $100,000 worth of reimbursement from FEMA for the November storm, and also he is planning on filing additional submissions in the very near future, and the estimated total will be approximately $300,000 from That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Dr. Esposito.
Yes, mayor, thank you. The mayor and I have called a meeting of the Electric Utility Study Committee. This group will convene on May 16th at 7:00 p.m. to discuss various topics, including the automated meter reading system, electric procurement that we went through over the last couple of months or so, solar power pricing to residents, using larger solar power to reduce Madison's dependence on outside generation, and system maintenance and reliability. Also, in the Electrical Department, the crew worked and completed new lighting under the Prospect Street Railroad Bridge. They rewired, controlled, and reinstalled a Waverly clock, which was fixed and cleaned recently. They completed installation of new secondary cable on Woodland Road in the Wanaka Terrace, and they also began installation of new secondary cable on Hamilton Street. On the planning board side, there was a resolution for a construction of a building located on Elmer Street, which probably will be starting very soon. Tonight, we'll also be voting on ordinance 5, which is rezoning of the 10 Maple Avenue property, and we also had a discussion from a lighting expert on LED, which will probably update our ordinance, because we don't have good control or good avenue to take for LED lighting that we have in town. On the Madison joint meeting, we had discussed the possibility of putting a solar electrical system there for savings to the power plant there over at the Madison-Chatham joint meeting. The potential to work with the Morris County is very well, and that will be acting as our PPA, which will basically cost Madison and Chatham virtually nothing, with a cost anywhere from $17,000 to close to $100,000 a year in power costs. And one last note from the state. The state is right now in discussions with two amendments, one in the Senate, number 467, and in the Assembly of 2290, that would require every utility to file an emergency response plan with the Board of Public Utilities. This plan would serve as an official plan of action for each utility in the event of a major power outage, and must include the identification of management staff responsible for utility operations during an emergency, an explanation of utility system of communication with customers during an emergency that extends beyond normal business hours and business conditions, a history of contacts with customers that document a need for essential electricity for medical reasons, designation of utility staff to communicate with local officials and relevant regulatory agencies, provisions regarding how utility will assure the safety of its employees and contractors, procedures for deploying utility and mutual aid crews to work assignment areas, and identification of supplies and equipment anticipated to be needed by utility during an emergency, and a means of obtaining additional supplies and equipment. Of course, as with any state legislation, there's always a cost to that, and so if we don't file, there is a $1,000 a day fine that is imposed on utilities if we don't come up with that plan, so I think we'll probably be working on one pretty soon if we don't have one already. So, again, thank you, mayor.
Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Lynx.
Thank you, mayor. The third annual Green Fair is set for Thursday, March 3rd from 3:37. Please, you love your station, sorry. This event is organized by Voice Rap, Voice Scout, 25, in partnership with the MEC. Over four years, there's expected, along with an expanded list of programs and processes. A demonstration by the Madison Royal College will take place, along with solar powered race cars by transoptics, and two electric vehicles will be there. One of them has to be a BMW, so I have to go see that. Special thanks to PSCNG and Realogy for their sponsors and support of the event. Also, I wanted to remind everyone that on May 1st, twice a week, we call this big up, PNCM. Thank you.
Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you, mayor. In anticipation of the June 5th primary election, the clerk's office will remain open for late-night voter registration on May 15th, 2012, until 8:00 p.m. Copies of the introduced and/adopted 2012 municipal budget, as well as the Budget in Brief, are posted on the Borough website, on the mayor and council, and finance department web pages. The Borough Clerk is currently working on annual review of all alcoholic beverage control licenses, as well as outdoor dining permits, and on the heels of a highly successful raffle we held in town for the MRC, where we were able to raise a gross amount of approximately $160,000. $80,000 was kept by the MRC, and $80,000 went to one lucky winner in Long Valley. Any organization considering a raffle should contact the clerk's office. We'll be introducing the budget tonight, and surely plenty of discussion on that when that happens. Thank you, sir.
Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan.
Hey, thank you, mayor. Okay, I have a few things. May Day is set for Saturday, May 5th, and help is needed. Anyone interested in volunteering should call the volunteer coordinator, Lisa Ellis, her number is (201) 423-49. Donations are still being accepted. Anyone interested in donating or learning more about May Day should call Mara Johnson at (973) 822-3900. And if you see these around, these are the envelopes for donations to May Day, so if you can, please donate. Following the work May Day morning, and we spoke a bit about this at the last meeting, there's going to be an after-event at the Ambulance Corps. It's open to the general public, it's from 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. There's going to be wine and beer tasting, there's going to be a pig roast, other food as well, there's going to be activities for children, it's all being sponsored by the DDC in partnership with the Ambulance Corps, so if you can attend, get the word out, it should be a nice day, and if the weather holds, it'll be wonderful. Within the ambulance building, they don't have a large room set up, so if you want to bring your children along, you can, they're going to have events for children as well, so it'll be a good day. Also, on the same night, at the Green Fair, the Madison High School PTO is sponsoring a Shop and Dine Madison fundraiser. You can buy an event bracelet for $10, which will give you special discounts at 32 participating merchants. For more information, please visit madisonpublicschools.org. The Chamber is sponsoring its second Ladies Night Out on Thursday, May 10th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Starting at 6:00, the first 50 women to register at Providence Bank will receive a swag bag with great freebie items from local merchants. Wine and cheese will also be served, compliments of Gary's Wine and Marketplace. There will be special prizes, sales, and promotions at participating restaurants. I want to know whether it's not a man's night out. I was fortunate this past week, actually last weekend, to participate in the Time of Your Life held by the Senior Center over on Walnut Street. I was able to obtain, on a personal level, a lot of valuable information, because I've just moved my mother up here. The Senior Center and all their resources are a great service to the Borough of Madison. If you or you have family that need information about resources for any senior citizens, please go there, they're wonderful people, Carmella's on their board, they do a great job, so please reach out to them. Okay, and then finally, Assemblyman John McKeon now has an office in Madison at 250 Main Street. He has applied for signage, and will be having a grand opening announcement once the signage is approved and placed on the site, so we'll welcome him. And that's it for me, mayor, thank you.
Very good. Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, mayor. Madison Health Department and the Boards of Health in Chatham Borough and Chatham Township are offering a women's health screening for all adult women over age 18 who reside in Madison, Chatham Borough, and Chatham Township. This Health Department program is open to all women who live in the participating towns, including nannies and other household employees, and those without health insurance coverage. The screening will be held at the Madison Health Department, located in the Civic Center, 28 Walnut Street, Madison, on Wednesday, May 23rd. Appointments are necessary and may be made by calling (973) 593-3079, extension 1, beginning April 26th, 2012. The Madison Health Department encourages women to sign up for the screening, and also to pass the word along to other resident women who may not know about this service. Call the Madison Health Department for an appointment for yourself or for a loved one. Participants should have their physician's name and address ready when they are called. I just want to say a personal note and congratulations to the Downtown Development Commission. I don't know if everybody noticed, but each one of the alleys down in, all through the center of town, have these beautiful new signs, and they're just a vast improvement over what was there. The wooden signs were really kind of decrepit, but these are done very nicely, and they're going to be lit up, which is going to be absolutely wonderful, and that'll be a good safety factor as well. And I just wanted to put in a little plug, also for Time of Your Life program, on April I am the chair of the Senior Advisory Committee, and it's been an absolute pleasure to work with these people. They just got very enthusiastic about this whole event, and it was the first time that an event like this was ever held at the Civic Center, and we got probably about 90 people to participate, and a lot of the vendors that came were very impressed with the seniors and the people who came, because they said they asked very intelligent questions, they were listening, and they moved from one exhibit to the other. So I wanted to say publicly thank you to everybody that sits on my committee, because they just worked very, very hard, and it was a lovely, lovely day. Want to also say special thanks to Mike Giordano of DPW. It was his day off, and I talked him into kind of showing up at 2:00 in the afternoon to set up all the tables. We're seniors, very definitely, so we needed a little extra help, and God bless Mike, he just stayed there, and he set up tables, chairs, and the next morning was there to make sure that we were okay, so I want to publicly say thank you to all of those people. That's all, mayor.
Now we'll move on to the budget hearing. Resolution 108-2012, resolution of the Borough of Madison finally adopting the 2012 budget and tax resolution. We hereby open the hearing for anyone in the room who'd like to speak on the budget. Please step up the microphone, state your name, and keep your comment and your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard on the 2012 budget?
Pat Rowe, 25 Pine Ave., Madison. I had sent some questions into Ray this afternoon, he had Robert talk to me beforehand, so most of them were answered, the questions were answered, and they mainly revolved around the electric and the water utility. But reading the budget, it struck me that, especially talking to Robert afterwards, it's not really a reflection of what those businesses are doing in terms of what the real revenues are, what the real expenses are, and what the profits are to residents of Madison, if you want to call them that. So what my recommendation would be for the council is, going forward, you consider treating them like they are standalone businesses with real P&Ls, and that you explain to people, both historically and going forward, what the real budgets are and what the real benefits are to Madison, because if you just look at the budget real fast, it appears that the expenses matched the revenues, ergo, there's no profits, but we all know that billions of dollars a year have come out of those utilities, so that would be my recommendation at this point. Thank you very much.
In terms of the rest of the budget, I'm very happy to see the 2%. I did have one question. This year, you guys had a fairly sizable savings in the terms of your healthcare. Looking at next year's budget, have you started to look at what the, I mean, given the range of opportunities that the state has for raising the healthcare budget, what the offset's going to be, and what you think the ultimate impact is going to be to the budget for your healthcare costs next year?
We think what, we don't have a firm estimate, but the second year of the state plan, the premium sharing with the employees goes into effect on July 1st, and I think there's going to be some premium chocolate for employees realizing the magnitude of their expenditure, so we think there's going to be some conversion during open enrollment to the higher deductible lower-cost plan.
Okay.
So, once we have that information and see how many migrate to the lower-cost plan, we'll have a better opportunity to come up with a number and project, but it definitely will be, we're not going to have the savings that we realized this year, no question, on pension or health.
Well, this year was mainly because you moved into the state plan, so you
Correct.
You got to step down. Next year, I guess the real question is, and we're starting to look at this on the Board of Ed's side, is what do you expect that the, if the increase, let's say from the state is 10%, what percentage of that do you expect would be absorbed by the employees through the step-up in their healthcare sharing costs, versus what percent do you expect the taxpayers to have to cover?
Well, the second percentage is 8.8%, so depending on what the magnitude of the increase, we're probably going to have to deal with at least 1.2% of the overage.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Sam?
Sam Cerciello Park, I'm in Madison. Just a couple suggestions, that every year we get an automatic increase with the health and all that insurance, and this is where, you know, we got to get some more money coming in, and I remember this is a couple suggestions, but I think are good suggestions. You know, I've got over 2,000 emergency calls just this month, to my understanding, is over like 60% of our emergency calls go to Drew University, and maybe we ought to consider being Drew, they charge $35,000, $40,000 a kid there, and we don't realize too much money just from the electric, but maybe we ought to suggest, like other towns are talking about it, charging each kid $200 or something, in other words, help offset some of our expenses, that's just a thought. In other words, other towns are talking about charging each student $100, $200, that's bringing over a couple hundred thousand dollars. And my second suggestion is that, I remember somebody talking a few meetings ago, or last year, with the insurance companies, in other words, a lot of emergency calls, why not, would people, we go with the ambulance to emergency, charge these insurance companies for going there with the ambulance, and if they don't have insurance, or whatever it is, you know, we'll do it for nothing through the ambulance, but why not charge, like other towns, for emergency calls with the ambulance? I mean, I think there, a lot of towns have that, a lot of, just two thoughts to bring some more money coming into the, because I understand we're running out of money, so we need money.
Thank you. Bob, you want to just answer the?
Sam, can I respond to the ambulance? We're all volunteer. The Borough just gives us a small stipend every year, so if we charged for calls, I wouldn't necessarily help the Borough. We survive on donations. for calls, I wouldn't necessarily help the Borough. We survive on donations. We budget around those donations. So to charge a resident, even if the insurance company would pick up a part of it, it doesn't matter. I mean, it wouldn't help the Borough at all there.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing. Motion for?
I approve Resolution 108-2012.
A second up?
Council discussion? Seeing, okay, roll call?
This is...
Oh, sorry, Jeanne?
Sorry. I do have some comments regarding this year's budget. I believe there are many positive aspects of this year's budget. I think we talked about many of them. Keeping the municipal tax increase to a very minimum, someone mentioned that just earlier. No utility rate increases, no changes in service, in all the services that we provide, more funding for capital and police, full funding plus utility subsidies for the library, and also we're continuing all our support for all the organizations in town. Those are all the good things about this year's budget. With that said, as you probably know, I have been expressing my concerns with our financials just as I had last year. First is the tax appeals. We have approximately 90 new appeals this year in addition to the many open appeals from 2009, 10, and 11. I learned from a meeting a couple of weeks ago that our estimated financial exposure for refunds is over $1 million. You may recall that our CFO reserved $250,000 last December for refunds. We now have less than $185,000 remaining. Any refund more than this amount would further reduce our surplus. As discussed in the past few months, this can potentially affect our bond rating. Also, since I was asked this question a few times from residents, I would like to explain now that, as you know, that the Borough collects tax payments and distribute appropriate portion, namely approximately 61% to the Board of Education and 15% to the county. But in the case of a refund, the Borough is responsible for the whole amount, 100% of it, not just the Borough's 23%. And we expect appeals to continue next year, even though we're going through the revow process. We believe state aid will most likely be reduced, and we just heard that health insurance costs will increase also next year. And on the capital side for the next four years, our estimate is over $10 million in addition to an essential $2 million capital upgrade for our joint sewer facility with Chatham. As you all know, we simply don't have $12 million. So to be fiscally responsible, we cannot just focus on putting the numbers together for the current year without looking into and protecting the financial health of the next few years. Remember, we can no longer count on our surplus, and I believe since our electric rate is already as high as the commercial rate, another rate increase is no longer a viable option as an additional source of revenue. That's why I believe that it's essential for us to mitigate our financial risks by reducing spending this year and finding recurring savings and revenue for the next few years during this budget cycle. Unfortunately, I believe we are again delaying the pain to the following year. We have not done ver, we have not, we have, excuse me, we have done very little to avoid more debt, sizable tax increases, and service reductions for the next few years. I will be voting no on the budget, but will continue to push very hard for implementing cost savings and revenue generation measures throughout the year. I really believe without further actions this year, I'm afraid that the alternatives are possible structural deficit again, service reductions, more debt, utility rate increases, and tax increases for next year. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. So when we, the outset of this budget process, council began reminding residents that this year's exercise was going to be difficult. We sent letters to the editors of our local media outlets requesting input and involvement. We received some feedback, mostly in the form of what not to cut. And in the first draft, in my first draft of the budget that I worked on with Chief Financial Officer Robert Califfitt, tried to satisfy those requests and the concerns of the rating agencies while addressing the crippling needs of our fragile infrastructure. The proposed budget, the draft budget, significantly reduced the use of surplus, which is paramount to the ratings agency, made allowances for incremental hiring in the police department, fully funded the library and the community house, and made significant contributions to the capital fund. It contained no increases in water or electricity rates, but it came with a hefty tax increase of almost 4%. The budget we're looking at tonight comes in at around 2%. And in an effort to retain the Borough Administrator and the Assistant Borough Administrator positions, you know, we said we were going to come up with some cuts. The main concern, though, is that one of the biggest cuts is no longer included because we're not going to go, we're not combining positions for the purchasing agent. And in this budget, there are several large one-time positive cash flows that really ease the process. Between $400,000 and $600,000, depending upon who you talk to, for moving municipal employees to the state healthcare plan, $800,000 received in construction fees for one large commercial project, and $250,000 for the sale of borough-owned property, which we will not repeat this year. Even with this positive flow in the current budget, we were only to rebuild surplus by $800,000. And that's not guaranteed due to several factors, including but not limited to up to $250,000 for commercial tax appeal dating back several years, up to $180,000 or more due to the resolution of the police union contract that expired in 2010, perhaps $100,000 due to the resolution of other municipal union contracts also expired for several years, not to mention the open residential tax appeals, which could amount to $800,000, $1 million. So what does it all mean? It means that we may only be able to rebuild our surplus by perhaps $250,000 this year, which is shocking when one considers the amount of positive surprises we enjoyed in this year's budget. You know, so I just, during this whole process, we're always talking about, you know, how we did things in the past. And I've heard many times people talk about the utility surplus, like it's some save-all, catch-all, save-all, and that all we have to do is get through to the middle of 2014 when the five-year long-term utility purchase price contract that we signed expires and the utility will return to traditional levels of profitability or maybe record profitability. But the problem with that as a risk manager is we cannot count on, you know, projected future surpluses because they're projected, and if they do occur, they occur in the future. And I don't see how, given the positive surprises we had in this year's budget, we will be able to avoid significant tax increases next year, the year after, or even, you know, the spending of fund balance to balance the budget. The single most frightening aspect, though, is that in this budget, $800,000 came from state aid. There are varying opinions on whether or not the governor will be able to reduce the New Jersey State Income Tax, but if he does, they're going to have to make up for that revenue somewhere, and aid to municipalities seems like a pretty cush place to do it. So as far as I'm concerned, that's at risk too. So I don't, so I voted against the budget last year because it didn't address adequately the capital needs, which we still estimate it between $10 and $12 million over the next five years. And given my personal opinion that this budget is not in the best interest of the Borough of Madison, because it doesn't address the operating side, I'll need to vote against it as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Other comments?
I'll just wrap up with a few things. Just a, this budget, obviously, this process gets better. It is far from perfect. We started last year with two people not even quite at the table yet so we could get a head start and continue the process through the early months. Obviously, this was one of the steepest roller coaster budget seasons I've ever seen in my time here in getting to where we are. I think we did hit on some of the major tasks, which is the 2%, money for capital, the preserving police officers, in fact, adding police officers, trying to do whatever you can to retain services, the high quality of services. So I think we have a very strong budget. Does the job end, as both Jeanne and Robert pointed out today? No, it certainly doesn't. The job continues, and we need to work to maintain this one, this budget going forward. We don't want to burden future councils and future residents by decisions made today, and I don't think this budget does that. Since Rob mentioned the $800,000 of state aid, state aid is a, is always precarious, and I just will want, need to go on record a message to Trenton that if we decide to make a income tax cut on the basis of state aid to municipalities, that will just shift the burden from the rich and put the burden on the middle class because we pay the same amount of middle property taxes and don't get the big benefit from the income tax. So I hope that will never happen. We need that support, and we need it more. So I urge fellow council members to support this budget and continue to work to make sure the 2013 budget and years to come are done prudently with protecting what we love about Madison. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, connect up?
Yes.
In terms of the budget, what we're proposing is a $66 increase for a home with a market value of $750,000. To try to put this in perspective, there's no water rate increase in this budget. There's no electric rate increase in this budget. We're maintaining our AAA bond rating even with the credit review, and we believe after, hopefully this budget is adopted tonight, we'll get a positive comment from Standard and Poor's. Last year's budget, we didn't have a dollar in the General Capital Improvement Fund. This year's budget provides $500,000 to invest in our infrastructure. Unlike other towns, we're not deferring any of our pension obligations. We're not reducing our force in any way, shape, or form. We're not reducing one service. We're not deferring our pension obligations. Unlike towns around us that had to apply and appropriate funds on an emergency basis, we funded $300,000, in excess of $300,000 for Hurricane Irene and the Halloween snowstorm without an emergency appropriation. Because of our fiscal stability and prudent monitoring of our financial situation, we're adding officers to public safety to address concerns expressed by the community. And in terms of state aid, that's really a misnomer. We send the state $34 million in state income tax and sales tax, and we get back less than 1%. So it's not really state aid. It's just give us back our fair share. This is a good budget, and it deserves your support. It was introduced unanimously, and we would hope that the members would reconsider their position and vote unanimously to support this budget in the best interest of this community.
What happened to the budget?
Um, it's good.
Good question, Sam.
Yeah.
You have to come in the podium.
So hypothetically...
Do you want me to answer this?
Yeah, hypothetically, if the budget got voted down, what would happen?
The budget, if the budget gets voted down, the Department of Community Affairs would get involved, and they would encourage you to pass the budget, look at it. Ultimately, if you recall, the City of Hoboken, I think it was three years ago, did not pass a budget. And at that juncture, DCA comes in, they appoint a fiscal monitor, and the state takes over.
That's okay, that's...
I couldn't, I can't, a bunch of like, yes.
Thanks for that information. And I also want to thank all the staff involved in the development of this budget. Ray, Jim, Robert, all the department heads, all worked very hard. And of course, the six people here in their respective areas for their work in producing this budget. Okay.
Roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
No.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
No.
Mr. Catalinello?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Yes. Communications and petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Council received one email on April 19th from Roberta Meyerson of Sherwood Avenue regarding installation of a traffic light at the intersection of Greenwood Avenue and Britton Street.
And now this is invitation for discussion number one. And this is on any items on the agenda for discussion, also resolutions. So on our agenda discussions, we have matching funds for senior citizens' bus, Madison Recreation Center donations update, North Street Pump Station rehabilitation, summer council meeting schedule, 10 Maple Avenue subdivision. And depending if you, when you saw the agenda, all the resolutions are posted, but we had several added, which include developers' agreement related to property on Elmer and Greenwood, a contract with PK Environmental, and also putting purple lights on, in recognition of Relay for Life on, for short time on Waverly Place. Is that, anyone wishing to be heard on these items? Please step up to the lectern, state your name, address, and please keep your comments to three minutes and state the topic you are discussing. Anyone wishing to be heard?
Sandy?
Thank you, Mayor. Sandy Kolekowski, Park Avenue, Madison. I'm looking forward to hearing more about the Madison Recreation Center donations update. And I don't know that much about it, so I'm looking forward to learning more about it. My one reaction, though, about one of the bullet points here, donor wall, one of the things that I was hoping is that the fundraising plan would be comprehensive and that we could look for ways to actually build things like walkways and seating areas, et cetera. And it just kind of struck me as, you know, I understand that you need a place where you can put plaques, et cetera, but maybe on benches and that type of thing. A wall just seemed, I would, I'd like to see something functional used instead of just a wall. I think that we built a field house, and we could have incorporated the donor wall on that if we had planned ahead of time. So I just thought that that might be something. As you know, we were assured that this fundraising would take care of the debt involved with the field, so it's a pretty steep climb. And I'm hoping that in light of the concerns and with the budget, et cetera, that we won't have the $3.5 million to have to permanently bond later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, and...
We'll make sure we cover it during, because we have the agenda items. So if we can make...
But it's real simple. The wall is not being paid for by the Borough. If you want to ask a question about it, it's at the end of here. It's not coming out of the Borough for...
No, no, I...
Yeah, I want to avoid the back and forth.
It's not that I...
We're, but part of our discussion coming up is to get a better understanding of the donor wall and the idea behind it. So that's why I wanted, hope that we had held off on that comment incorporated in there. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing, Tim?
Tim Harrington, Crossgates Road. I have to agree with all the comments that were made as part of the budget reproof. as part of the budget repro, approval process, because they're all true. Ray's true, Jeannie's true, Rob's true, and there's a lot more to be talked about it. The last time we talked, we have a sustainability ordinance on here, this town doesn't have a strategic plan, a formal strategic planning committee. That's shocking. You're right, there were a lot of one-shoters in here. We may get lucky and have some more, plus, I've said we have quite a lot of squirrely places around here that there's money still left in, but that doesn't justify not following up on what some of the council people, I think all the council people are actually concerned about, some who didn't speak about it. But we need to do a much more thorough addressing of issues, a much more thorough attempt, cost-benefit analysis down at the department level and at functions in general around, because you're directionally right. The streets are falling apart. What you don't see underneath those sewers, they're falling apart every day, too, and the only way to address it is almost to continue this process of budgeting. And we ought to revisit, as I've said before, that October 2010. It had a lot of very valuable information showing history, but there were no conclusions of, well, you could do alternative A, B, or C, or D. There was no judgment of that, and we've lived for a couple of years on the budgeting things on that. I won't go into any specific details, but I have identified a whole pile more of issues, such as have been briefly mentioned tonight. If you saw my comments, and I don't know whether it got to you, but I'd give the mayor my draft of what I think about this sustainability gobbledygook, and at least simplified the writing of it, but I'm not sure that a lot of those issues aren't federal issues or international issues, but you're going to approve it anyway tonight, but I think it ought to be at least put in layperson's language. It's gibberish and incomprehensible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Tim and I joked about how much money the government could save if we banned the word whereas. I figured books could be a lot smaller and so on, so we'll look into that. Sam, and then?
Sapsor Seale, Madison. I'd just like to question Resolution 115 and 116. Can you explain them two resolutions, please?
Those are, North Street, so the rejection. Maybe, Matt, it would be best for you to explain it so we don't overstep.
The 115 and 116, one of them is rejection of the lowest bidder. We provided the entity in 115 with what's known as a responsibility hearing. They declined to come forward and demonstrate that they were the responsible low bidder. After due notice, they, after not only phone calls and letters, they did not appear, and therefore, we're going to the second lowest bidder in 116 that we believe is the lowest responsible bidder for this project.
And he's been checked early, this Martini's son?
Yeah.
He's done a lot of jobs around?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we have experience with Martina, which is a plus.
Right.
All right. You know, money here, what happens to, you know, this pump station, like I said, it wasn't for, somebody, myself, find out that that job, he was not qualified a year ago to do this, so we had to do this all over again. Now here we are, back to square one again. But what happens to that $30,000, $40,000 that was designed by this consultant who never should even have designed the pump station? The point that I'm getting at is we waste a lot of monies in construction as far as putting stuff together, making sure we get our monies worth. That, that $30,000, $40,000 that went to this consultant to put this design together a year ago, that's our lost money?
Actually, those plans were used as a basis for the other engineer to expand on, so they were not, it was not money out the window. We revisited the project, used the original work, and came up with a far better design and specifications for the project.
There was, he needed, he needed that guy who never designed the pump station, so he can...
But it, it, it was not, it was not as if we ripped up, what I'm saying is, yes, I agree, the process maybe could have done differently, but we didn't throw away the documents, say we're gonna start from scratch. We used that as a basis for further design, so the money was not out the window.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we didn't really need to spend that money. You're like my son, you got all the answers. This is good.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Betsy? Go ahead, James, and then Betsy.
James Sullivan, 25 Robbie Avenue. I'd actually like to speak out for ordinance for 2012, because I had the privilege of meeting with Mr. Viasse at BPW, and I believe these little vehicles will save the borough a fair amount of money versus having a full-size Jeep or another size vehicle, and I hope that both the fire, police, and possible ambulance corps could look into these as well for fitting into tighter spaces and things like that. So as vehicles age, I agree with it, and I hope we get a lot of use out of it.
Thank you. And just a reminder for everyone on this part, we're speaking on resolutions and, and the things on the agenda. Ordinances actually have a hearing, so you would have had an opportunity, but you got that out of the way, and you were very short, short and to the point, so that was helpful. Yes, Betsy?
I'm Betsy Alman. I'm chairing the Environmental Commission, and I just wanted to respond to Mr. Harrington's comments about the sustainability ordinance. It is actually related to sustainable jersey?
I, I, Betsy, I'm sorry.
Statewide organization?
Since I, since I just told, so this one's coming up for hearing, so we'll, since I just told James what the, so we'll hold off on that with you, okay?
Okay.
So stay, stay close by. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on anything on the discussion agenda or resolutions? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to our first agenda discussion, matching funds for senior citizens' bus. Carmel?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This agenda rec is for a matching grant from the Jacob Henry Perkins Trust Fund in the amount of $31,000 to pay for one-half of the cost of a new senior citizen van. What we've noticed over the last couple of years, that the ridership on this van that we have currently has doubled, and we expect that it's going to probably triple in the next year or so. And so there's, this, this particular van has had multiple problems. One of the things that I did was I made sure that I spoke with the mechanics and David Mainz to see how much that van was actually costing us. During the, the capital budget presentation, there was $60,000 that was put aside for this particular van, and at the time, I said, you know, we'll, we'll give up the $60,000 if we could take one-half of the money from Jacob Henry Perkins Fund, and I would make an effort to get a matching grant in the amount of $31,000, which is the cost of, of a new van. So anyway, what, one of the things that it led to is that, I don't know if many people remember, but I, one of the things I did last year was, was to take a grant certification course, and I got my certification in grant writing. That doesn't mean that you know what you're doing, believe me, but with the able assistance of Jim Burnett and Jim Sanderson, we came up with a plan to, to talk to some people about the possibility of getting a grant little committee together. There, there was a, there's a very nice resident that I took the class with who actually is going to be able to coordinate looking at grants. We went ahead and we subscribed to the Foundation Center from New York that gives a tremendous amount of information regarding any type of grants to foundations, to corporations, and whatever. And so that is going to be in effect. So what we're trying to do, or what we're going to do, I'm not going to say try, we're going to do this, is that we will, on our first try, try for a new senior van in the amount of $31,000. So this matching, so we will not use this $31,000 from the Perkins Trust until we get that particular grant.
All right. Questions? This is on for resolution. Jeannie? Yes, Jeannie?
I guess this question is, I don't know, Carmel, you know the number, Ray probably knows. The $31,000 is from the interest, it's not from the original?
Correct.
Right.
And right now, we have $52,000 in interest income and $300,000 in the corpus of the, of the trust, and maybe it would be helpful for the public to know. This was a Madison resident, a dentist approximately 40 years ago, as part of his estate, left a large sum of money to the community for community activities to benefit the residents of Madison. There was a dispute from his children, the case was settled, the children were, received a payment from the trust, and then the...
The aged population. That's how this all started. So this was a particularly good fit for this particular project.
And certainly with grants, they always look for partnership and the level of commitment.
Yes, absolutely. Makes it a lot better.
Yep. And I also, it was reinforced when I was at the health fair at, two Saturdays ago at Senior Center, and as they talked about the value of the van, and boy, wouldn't be nice to do on Saturdays, too, so there's just more and more use for that van. So this is listed with the consent agenda. Moving on to number two, Madison Recreation Center donations update.
Brian Agnew, 15 East Lane, Madison Athletic Foundation. Do I have to put my name in?
Um, I guess, you're, you're a speaker, so I guess...
You know who I am. You know where to find me.
Oh, it doesn't hurt, though, anyway. Really. Thank you.
No relationship to Spiro, by the way, who changed his name. Originally Agnostopolis. So I've been asked to come tonight to give you an update on the fundraising for the Madison Athletic Center. And I think many of you know that we've been pursuing various different avenues for fundraising for the complex that was recently opened. I think that first avenue we just completed was the first-ever Madison Athletic Foundation 50-50 raffle, and in quick summary, we sold 1,600 tickets at $100 a ticket, so gross proceeds for about $160,000, and as Rob mentioned, one lucky winner, $80,000 from Long Valley. My wife and kids were very disappointed. There was a lot of tickets, and $80,000 for the turf complex, which we're thrilled by. I'm told it's the largest single raffle in Madison. If anybody can refute that, please let me know. We learned a lot, and I think as the years go on, we, we certainly anticipate this to be an annual event, and I think that, you know, I said we learned a lot, and we'll be, we're optimistic that we can beat that target next year, so we, we're looking forward to that. Concurrent with the, with the raffle, we now are headed into two major campaigns, the first of which is the donor wall, and I think the most simple way to explain that is, well, I guess it's, it's a donor wall. Basically, what we envision is, is it's, we're calling it the M Club, and for a donation of $3,500, which can be paid in one lump sum or over a period of four to five years, you get your name and a nice plaque up on this donor wall, which is right by where all the flag posts are located, which looks great. It's going to be very simple, and it's aesthetic to keep down cost. We have to really keep down cost with all this. I think we envision spending, you know, bare bones, call it $7,500 to build the donor wall. We're going to get a lot of the materials and, and the labor donated. So that's, I guess that's path number A. Path number B now is corporate donations and advertising on the fields, which are going to take various different forms, the first of which is advertising on the fields. You can buy an advertisement of an annual sign for $1,500. We've already signed up five local, local corporations, and we anticipate that those signs are going to start to, start to be hung on the field shortly. You know, we're thinking that demand for that could be anywhere between 25 to 50 signs, so certainly could be a very nice stream of, of income going forward. So you've got the donor wall, and just to back up there for a second, we've left availability for 100 plaques. So in theory, it could be a $350,000 ticket, which would be great if we ever were to make that. We've got six donations already, and I'm optimistic that we'll get somewhere between 25 or 50 in the first year, so stay tuned on that. I'll come back and report on that. I think the other avenues that we're pursuing, and I think, you know, the mayor had, had briefly touched on it, you know, the committee is, is reaching out to local corporations to try and have certain aspects of the fields or the fieldhouse or the, or the, the goalposts and, and other things on the field, obviously to be named, i.e. naming rights, which we think, we've got a whole corporate deck that we're using with corporations, that we're going to start going out and meeting with very shortly. So just to give you a quick summation of where we stand for kind of 2012 projected, if you will, so we just finished the raffle, that was 80,000 in proceeds for the turf fields. The user fees are coming in at about $55,000. We're optimistic that we'll get 50,000 for M Club this year, 40 to 50,000 for fence signs, 20,000 in miscellaneous donations, and none of this, by the way, includes revenues to the fields, which we think can be material in certain years. So our total projected 12 revenue, as it sits today loosely, is about $225,000 outside of major donations from corporations naming certain, certain parts of the field. So, oh, yeah, I'm getting to that. Rob just reminded me, we're also going to be launching a paver project, which kind of sits in between the two fields. There's two really great spaces that we've designated for pavers. So four months in, we've raised close to, so far, about 140, 150,000, which is a great start. I couldn't be happier. I think the foundation is really excited about the progress that we've made to date. And the fieldhouse, which I guess is expected to cost about $125,000, is being funded 100% by the foundation. We've already paid about $75,000 of that, and we, we estimate a completion date somewhere around June 2012. Have I missed anything? So in summary, thank you for everybody that bought a ticket to the raffle. We appreciate it. It was very successful. Good luck to you next year, and I guess I'll open it up for any questions, if there are any.
Questions for Brian?
Questions, comments? Sorry, James, it's just the council. So the, the approach is, as described, is kind of more of the stadium approach of selling naming rights, signs.
Yeah.
So there would not be a, a permanent naming of a field, unless, I guess if someone came up with a, a million...
If you're willing to come up with the money, we'll name it after you.
Yeah, so, so, so that door, that door is certainly open, so that's, yeah.
That door's wide open. So come on in, water's fine.
Yeah. And, and one of, just a, and I certainly can talk more offline, but the suggestion for the donor wall, since you have the $3,500, is make sure the wording is donations of 3,500 or more to be recognized, and you have different levels, that so if someone wanted to give 4,000, it's certainly would, lovely to, to take it and they'll get their plaque, right?
100% agreed.
Yep.
A bigger plaque.
Yep. Any other questions? All right. Thank you much, very much, Brian, for coming, coming into...
That was a good opening day, by the way.
It was, yeah, very nice event. North Street Pump Station Rehabilitation, do we need to cover this anymore? I think we covered exactly what we needed to. Summer council meeting scheduled. Jeannie and I had a little discussion walking out the door two weeks ago, and this was under, do we actually need to meet twice a month in July and August? Would one, one meeting each month work fine, except for if an emergency came up, and if so, what would the, which ones will we cut out? Thoughts about dropping two? Rob?
I, I think, I think we, we tend to have very full agendas, so I wouldn't want to drop both, both months.
Yep.
I mean, I can, you know, August is typically pretty slow, barring hurricanes, you know, but I think if anything, maybe we could drop the August one, but I think we, we need to, we need to continue. We, I mean, everything's very full. There's a lot going on.
Jeannie?
Yeah, one of the things that I was concerned about in our conversation is if we had bills to pay, that we need to approve the vouchers. We'll be the only concerned.
As far as vouchers, is that any... As far as vouchers, is that any extra? If there's, if they're only approved, if it was just once a month, would that be an issue?
As long as it's okay with Pat Rowe, that we pay him late at the Board of A. That would be the concern, Constellation Energy, you want to, there's certain very prompt payment requirements, otherwise they can take us to weekly billing instead of monthly billing. So those would be the concerns about stretching it out. If it goes close to a month between the meetings, then that could be a challenge.
So this is a forever evolving process, so what I'm hearing is let's not jump too fast. Two meetings in July, the August ones are thirteenth and twenty-seventh. My gut feeling is the end of August, this town is pretty quiet. So we drop the twenty-seventh meeting.
Yeah, that's a good one.
So we would have one meeting in the month of August, which would be August thirteenth. And one other item for discussion, we don't need, related to meeting times, we don't need to settle this right now. Veterans Day this year is, the eleventh is a Sunday, so the holiday is Monday, the twelfth, which would be our regular meeting date. If we push, it's normally we have it the Wednesday, which is the middle of the League of Municipalities Convention. So my thought would be possibly move it to November fifth. It's November.
No, this is.
November. The first Monday, I forget what conflicts we have for the first Monday. Though I didn't have it on my.
No, it's not good. We don't have anything scheduled for first Mondays typically.
Planting board's Tuesday, yeah.
You can't vote, right, it's better? I mean, it's the, when's the election?
Tuesday.
Are you allowed to have a meeting before the election?
Yep, as long as we don't go twenty-four hours. So we'll, we'll, we won't settle, we'll, we'll do some more research on that, but tend to look at November fifth, so we'd have fifth, and then the regular fourth Monday in November. Ten Maple Avenue subdivision.
This is the property across the street from Borough Hall. It's the former recreation building, it's currently vacant, it was used as a construction office, it's been declared surplus by the governing body, and this will be available for sale. It's currently zoned for open space and government use. The planning board has recommended, and we concur, hopefully with your support tonight, to change the zoning from open space, government use, to R-three zone, which would allow, it would maximize the revenue at an auction that we will be having in the near future, and allow someone to reestablish that as a one-family residence. And this just allows, by changing the zoning, to allow a family to hopefully purchase, renovate, and, and move into that home, and pay us a little bit more money than they would currently.
I just wanted to ask Ray, when do you think the auction would take place on this? During the summer, or are we going to wait for the fall?
Probably just because people are away, we were thinking that after Labor Day. I mean, we'd like to get the closing and the proceeds in this calendar year to use it in the 2013 budget. And I know that was one of Councilman Calonel's concerns about sale of property, and this is one of our strategies for next year, to have these resources for next year. I know it's not recurring revenue, but this is an asset that we have, that we have no other use for.
All right. So as said, this ordinance is listed for introduction, and I think another thing on the to-do list before we put it auction is to come up with parking, whether it's a, reformalize the fact they would get access to two parking spots, or they would be able to put a driveway across the two, but one way or another, they're going to end up with two parking spots. So we'll come back to that at a later date. All right, that closes this part of the meeting, and on to ordinances for hearing.
Ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at a regular meeting of the council, held Monday, April ninth, 2012. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting a seat.
I call the ordinances for second hearing, ask the clerk to read the said ordinances by title.
Ordinance three, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison establishing the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee.
I open the hearing?
I'm still head seal open. And I'm with the Environmental Commission. And I wanted to respond to Mr. Harrington's comments, and also just revisit sustainability. Sustainability is really the three Ps, people, planet, prosperity. And Sustainable Jersey, which our Sustainable Madison ordinance will let us participate in, is an organization started by Rutgers and the Mayor's Council, and it is dedicated to providing skill sets for municipalities in the state to save money, to enact green actions, and to strengthen their local communities. Our ordinance is structured to allow residents to work with borough representatives and educators. And it is going to yield some rather complicated and many projects. So we have a, a structure that allows all these folks to work together on multiple projects. It's not as focused as like a May Day. It, there will be people working on energy efficiency and education, and water conservation, and, and all over the map. Also, we'll have residents, the composition of residents expertise will be reflecting these various project focuses. So I would encourage everyone to look above any confusing clauses, which would have only been borrowed from other ordinances, and look at the kind of community that this ordinance will help us build, a, a community that's really created around the concept of sustainability. And I just wanted to mention that our Green Fair is coming up, and this is, although it's being co-hosted by the Environmental Commission and the Boy Scout Troop Twenty-Five this year, this is something that was started because of Sustainable Jersey, this is our third fair, and it provides a lot of education, a lot of opportunities for residents to learn about sustainable living. And this year, and this is the kind of project that Sustainable Madison will try to work with, Project Porch Light, which is supported by BPU and clean energy programs, is making available to us the opportunity to sell these lighting kits that have compact fluorescent bulbs. So a dozen of those bulbs and two lamps can be purchased by residents or people at the Green Fair for twenty dollars, that would be seventy-five dollars, but ten dollars will go back to Sustainable Madison. And that will be the beginning of our CE plan. So, you know, we are not, Sustainable Madison isn't a budget item, and we will be starting to get grants and try to work on projects like this in order to save the borough money.
There you go. We'll give you an extra minute for a commercial here.
The Green Fair, these are available, so this is a great deal, it's a very healthy substance deal. And we think it's the kind of thing that Madison residents need to know more about. So I hope that the council will support the Sustainable Madison ordinance and the kind of changes we can make in our community.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing. Don?
Mayor, I move on to three, the two thousand.
A second.
Council discussion?
Betsy? I'm sorry, I just have a question for you. So you'll be addressing issues such as environmental issues, home safety issues, ways for people to save money, I mean, it's going to be an across-the-board type of projects?
Yes, if you go to sustainablejersey.com, you will see that there is basically a toolkit with best practices tools for many, many areas. So, you know, which ones we will tackle right off the bat really depends on which residents are willing to carry the.
No, it sounds like a very good question, well, thank you.
I want to personally thank you for your direction on this. I was the first to talk about this ordinance. I feel like that was probably about two or three months ago, right?
Right.
You've done a great job, and we have much more to do in Madison as we move forward, but thank you very much. As you all know, I am supporting this, and I would appreciate you all, thank you.
Jeanie?
The version included in our package does not include any of the changes that we have suggested at the last meeting.
Which changes?
I think we spoke about, well, I only remember the ones that I've suggested. If there were other ones that I didn't take note. Couple of things, one is the under-membership. The recommended changes was to add Borough Administrator, or this is item B on the twenty-six dash three, Borough Administrator or the Assistant Borough Administrator as a non-voting member. And also, Matt has suggested change the wording of section twenty-six dash two, item F, as in Frank, to include verbiage about the committee is subject to Open Public Meetings Act, and follow all the rules and regulations.
The Open Publics Meetings Act, I don't think it's necessary for you to put that action in the ordinance, they're required to comply with the Open Public.
Anyway?
Anyway, by law, so the law supersedes the ordinance, and I think you, if you want to add in Borough Administrator, that was noted at your last meeting, I think that's just a, the clerk can revise that to reflect Borough Administrator and/or Assistant Business Administrator, that would be acceptable.
Okay.
It's a minor change.
It's minor, would not have an impact on the ordinance, but the Open Public Meeting Act, you don't need to, you don't need to specify that because they are mandated.
It's there already?
Zoning board, recommission, they're all required to be under the Open Public Meeting Act.
Okay. I just noticed one additional item here for twenty-six dash five, B on the procedure. I would recommend that, that first sentence there, all requests for employee or professional staff assistance should be made through the Borough Administrator, I would like to add, and the council liaison.
I have no problem with that, but is that really what the [inaudible]?
The only, my only concern with that is to try to separate the, the council from the day-to-day work of the employees, that the Borough Administrator, where they designated at the time, would be regulating the work of the staff, and I think the key is making sure that staff are not overburdened and pulled away from their day-to-day functions.
Right.
So.
I, I think I'm thinking about the case that, that you have a lot of staff time will be required, it will be good for the council liaison to work with the administrator or the assistant administrator on this together. That's why I thought it's a good idea, since the liaison will be attending all the meeting and really understand the needs of the committee, and also, the liaison typically will act as the advocate for the committee anyway.
I could go, I, I think it's good the way it is, but if the, obviously, I'd like to see this move forward, so if that's going to make a big difference.
Can, can this ordinance be amended after it's kind of tested in a little bit? You know, because we keep on making these changes, and we need to move this forward so that they could get busy. Don certainly is liaison to environmental, and he'll be reporting to us on, on a consistent basis. If he feels that we need to change that, can we just amend it later on?
My opinion may be very simple. I think that we don't have to, we don't have to, or just caveat to it, I do believe however that if we can change this ordinance and tweak it, perhaps a month or two or three down one, it's better to tweak it when you have experience and what's going on versus to tweak it today, and not really know how ultimately you want it to work. So I would be more inclined to leave it as it is now, and then come back perhaps at the end of the summer, and say, hey, it works, no, hey, it don't work.
Yep.
Simple.
I think the council president's comments, you have the council liaison under the membership, and the council liaison, who is the member, the council liaison through the Environmental Commission will be able to observe, and if he or she observes that there is an expenditure or the, you know, excessive use of the borough employees, they should absolutely raise that to the council at any meeting, and then you guys could amend it. But I think that that, that's really acts as the watchdog on it. And your prior question about the Open Public Meeting Act, it is, if you look at twenty-six two G, it says the committee will hold a minimum of six public meetings annually, which will be open to the public pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, and it shall take place at Borough Hall, unless otherwise noted. So it does comment on.
Cover that, okay.
Yeah, it is covering that.
Bob?
Yeah, I just had one question in regards to the request for employees or professional staff. We have a lot of other committees in the borough. To be consistent, I think that's the key here, how are they structured? Does the council liaison actually get involved in it?
Not, not in the use of the staff in a day-to-day.
You know, so I would come down on just being consistent with the rest.
You know, I actually went and looked at Borough Code to look at how other ones were established and written. I did not find other ones, maybe I missed it, that have the similar section as this one.
Similar section, as to?
Twenty-six dash five, Borough Department Assistance. But I don't know if Liz or Ray can point me to those ones that actually have this language. I, I could not find any other ones with this language.
Yeah, I guess the, the key is to avoid committees directly telling staff what to do, and if, if it's covered in other ways, and it doesn't need to be in here, if, if this is a good way to get it started, introduce, so we can tweak others, that might, might be a, a way to look at it.
I mean, I still go back to what I said two minutes ago.
Yes.
I'm going to work with the M C and this to me, if I find this problem, I'll speak to them as I would with you. If that doesn't work, I'll come back here, if that doesn't work, I'll jump out of window.
So I think, so I think we, we leave, leave it in there, and I think it's, Rob?
I just have one question on this, and then I have other questions, but, so in twenty-six five B, any project that requires substantial assistance from the borough staff and professionals shall be reviewed by the full committee, and said assistance shall be approved by the council. So who, so, so the committee will decide that they need all this assistance, and then come directly to us, or will it go through the Borough Administrator? You know, who's to determine as to when they come to the, to the, to the council for permission to utilize staff?
I think, yeah. I think the intent is the, the Borough Administrator would make sure, serve as the funnel, and make sure that the right, right amount of work is being given, if it's going to be over and above, become a substantial part of someone's job, or for the next month, a substantial part of the, the job, it should come back to here, because that's going to take them away from the.
And the Borough Administrator is comfortable with that responsibility.
And I talk to Don all the time.
And it says right here that before any project commences, it requires approval of the council, so they can't come here and sit up, by the way, we just spent twenty thousand dollars, can you approve it after the fact? It requires you, as the governing body, to approve it prior to the expenditure of those funds, which might be.
I'm not even talking about that, it's any, all requests for employee or professionals to have assistance, doesn't necessarily say that's, you know, specifically attached to a, you know, something that costs money, just, you know, just want to know who decides when it comes to council, and if they're comfortable with that.
Rob, they have to come for council, very simply, we're all the people that donate the money out.
I'm not, I'm not talking about any money.
But, but for major projects.
And they could come and say, oh, Jim, we need you to, you know, crunch these numbers, or, you know, do these mailing, or do something. It's something that doesn't necessarily include any sort of funding at all, just, these guys are comfortable with it, it's fine with me.
Anything else?
I do have one more question.
Yep.
So two weeks ago, I asked if the same, we could achieve our same goals by structuring this in a similar manner to the way the May Day Committee is structured in the DDC, or if in fact the mayor could appoint a green team? And I believe the answer was in the affirmative, so then I asked, what is the, what is the benefit, keeping in mind?
So then I asked, what is the, what is the benefit, keeping in mind that we don't want to burden future councils with our decisions overdue. What is the, what is, what is the benefit to establishing this under an ordinance as opposed to either structuring it as a subcommittee to the, you know, to the MEC because they seem to be tied very closely together or just having the mayor appoint a green team?
I, I think the, a couple of things we covered and a few other things hit me in between the, the two weeks. One, it, it's correct, it's not necessarily required. It, it stands out stronger that of a commitment from the Borough as far as going for grants that the Borough has made a commitment, ongoing commitment. The, it provides a continuity of the, of rotating appointments as opposed to start from scratch every year. So you have, it, the, the previous members, one or two may be returning because their term is not up. So you have that continuity. The other thing is unlike like May Day is an event-driven. So the fact that every year you establish May Day, the committee is working towards that event. This is not really event-driven, so its definition keeps changing as to how their projects are going to be. And so by having an ongoing committee, they can continually create new projects and go for new grants. I think the, a lot of the subcommittees you look at fall into categories. One, again, they're event-driven, so they're very healthy. And the others are the ones that up and down, one of the, for example, one of my favorites, which I established. And then as I became mayor, have not been able to keep it going is the Traffic Common Committee. A, a very good committee, it did a lot of great work, but if you don't have someone to take the lead to make sure it gets reappointed, it, it may fall on the wayside.
So, and I, and Betsy, thank you so much for your work on this. You also mentioned some best practices. I'm not really familiar with those best practices, but could they include something like, I don't know, a tree ordinance or something like that? Or is, is, is this committee not going to be focused on that? You're going to be more concerned with, you know, the whole carbon issue, although trees are a big part of the carbon issue. But is that, would that be something you would look at as well over time?
There's an important tree category in sustainable Jersey and we have pretty much cleaned it out because our shade tree management board is so excellent that we've actually given special note for having such a strong program with tree planting and tree surveys and so forth. It's possible that the sustainable tree ordinance is there, but that's, that's something that probably wouldn't come through sustainable Jersey. And we've, you know, we're working on so many parts of that tree area that probably we will, as a community, look at other, other things because between the Friends and Shade Tree and Shade Tree Management Board, they've got that well in hand.
Thank you. Don?
I would also, as far as you think of our moment, your point of rotation about burdening people for council. But I know we've burdened over the last three years for some of the votes before our time. But in this particular case, I would think I want to make it difficult to take away. Anything they're going to do, they have to come to council with. They can't always say we do something because it's a nice day outside. So there is a check and balance.
Don, you know, I, I'm, my whole question is, and I'm sure people remember that I wrote a letter to the editor in the last October during the election season about the way I thought this should be structured. And you can read it online, you know, and it's basically, I, I was a big proponent of the setting it up as a subcommittee of the MEC and the whole Madison 2020 we referred to at the time. So I'm, that's my line of question. It's not whether or not, it's not whether or not we should do it, you know, of course, we should, you know, do as much as we can. Just for me, it's the way it was structured.
Yeah, my feeling was to make it a bit more difficult to raise after all of us are run.
Make it more sustainable.
I mean, you know, that's how I look at it, so.
Okay, any other comments? All right, I, I will just, you know, urge the council to support this. And if it does pass that we have a new committee to fill, so I would ask council members to send me their suggestions. And people in the audience, if you know friends, please spread the word and we'd love to get some new volunteers involved. Yeah, we're sorry. Roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Unfortunately, I'll have to vote no.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ordinance four, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $20,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for purchase of a utility vehicle.
I open the hearing for ordinance four, 2012, and already note James Sullivan's comments on that. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move ordinance four, the 2012.
I have a second. A second. Council discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we're up to the second invitation for discussion. This is when you may speak, Don. Anything that's on your mind? Again, keep it to three minutes, state your name, your address, as you come up to lectern, anyone wishing to be heard? James?
James Sullivan, 25 Robby Avenue. I would like to say thank you again to the DPW of the town and the town for giving out those chips. We received a load, we've used it, and I also heard Mr. Yasi that they've gone through most of it. So as far as I can tell, we've made a lot of town shells and it's a smashing success.
Thank you. It's one of, it was one of the hot topics in Madison.
We get Mr. Positive.
Yeah, yeah, we like that.
Isn't that great? Good for you, James.
Lisa?
Yeah, I kind of missed that hearing on this, on this ordinance. So maybe you will have to amend it sooner rather than later on the sustainable whatever. Where it says you put a representative from the office of the superintendent of the Madison Public School System. That's just really strangely worded. If you really want to think about who's in the office of the superintendent, it's the superintendent and his administrative assistant. And I'm pretty sure neither of them, well, Miss Sue might be willing to, you know, volunteer, but it's awfully limiting.
I, I think our intention was not to do that and I think we did the opposite because the wording was different at the start.
Okay.
So.
I would, I would have just asked you to, to suggest that you just cross out the office of the superintendent and just have a representative from the Madison Schools. That way it could have been anybody from a staff member to a board member to, to, you know, anybody who was willing to serve. And I think you just kind of limited yourself there.
Matt, what, what do we do?
I, I, I would not change it at this juncture. I think the office of the superintendent, in a school system, the superintendent, all, all employees report to the superintendent except for the board secretary or the board attorney.
Yeah, it's strangely, I think it's strangely worded.
This was crafted from the Sustainable New Jersey Law Ordinance.
Is the intent for him to appoint someone?
He clearly has the right to appoint. So he could appoint somebody from the, you know, from his custodial staff or from maintenance buildings, grounds, et cetera. The reason I don't think they, I think they limited it so that it's not a board member is because a board member would also be a resident. So I think the resident would fall under the, the other membership in, in the, the thing. I don't think it would be appropriate for a board member to be appointed. The superintendent couldn't appoint a board member. Superintendent couldn't appoint anybody below the superintendent but not a board member. If a board member so desired to serve this along with being a, a Board of Education member, they'd have to go through the other employment procedures laid out in the membership section.
So your intent is to have somebody from out of town fill this position?
Or ju- ju- just a.
It's really, it's really to have a voice.
Voice from the school system.
The superintendent himself could appoint himself if he, if he so desired. Or he could appoint somebody else just to, to have a presence from the school system so that there's a voice on this advisory body in terms of sustainability.
Okay, that, that's great. It's just, it reads just very awkwardly.
As Mr. Harrington pointed out, it's just like everything else we do here. Sorry about that.
If it read smoothly, no lawyers would have jobs.
And speaking of Mr. Harrington, Tim?
It's interesting, Mr. Elias, you brought that subject back. I was going to give the superintendent schools more credit than he deserved. And I would have recommended that the town administrator and the public works also have the right to appoint a representative. And I do agree with council's comment, it could be even the janitor in the case of the superintendent schools. But I thought that was quite wise in that structure, but I guess it wasn't quite that way.
Thank you. Pat?
Pat Rowe, 25 Pine Avenue. I wasn't sure I should speak before, I decided to wait till the end. It's regarding the Madison Athletic Commission. I was very happy to participate in the, in the fund drive as well as making a little speech. But I do kind of echo Sandy's comments about it probably would be good if the, there was a periodic sort of accounting of what's happening with the MAF funding. I'm not quite sure in terms of how it's structured, do they retain the funds until the Borough asks for it to pay debt service? Do they have a schedule that says they're going to make a certain amount of principal payment depending on how much money they have? And even along the lines of naming rights to the fields, if somebody came to us with an opportunity, the Board of Ed would still have to make the decision whether or not the field got named for the price that's being proposed. Do you guys retain that right in terms of what does or doesn't get put up at the field?
We, we put together when we agreed to, when the MAF stepped forward to take the leadership role in fundraising and we set up that partnership, we put a resolution in place that outlines many of the things you, you just brought up, including sharing their annual financials, the up, regular reports on the fundraising, the transfer of funds in a timely manner. So they're, they're used to, for the purposes they're intended and the review of naming rights. So we don't have the Budweiser Field.
That could be somebody's name in town.
Yep.
So how, does that get published to the public periodically or is that just something that's shared with council?
That's, it, it's, it's basically a public document, so it could be shared to the public. It is to be submitted to the CFO for records and then distributed to the council if appropriate or needed. But minimally he has it and certainly can be released.
Is there a timing on one that has to be submitted annually or semi-annually?
Yeah, it depends, it depends on the documents such as the audit, the, their 990 is an annual. There's a, I think a quarterly financial report. We receive copies of the bank statements. I'm just going from my memory, but th- those are all included in that.
Because I think it would be good to help the public see, you know, where the money's going, how you're sort of bringing down the overall debt and, you know, where the money's coming from in terms of what was budgeted, what is, what's actually being brought in. Because I was actually surprised at the amount of money that Brian's expecting to bring in this year. I know that the, the money was coming in from the user fees, the use fee and the, and the raffle. And there was some other opportunities, but I didn't expect them to actually get to that high a number. So it would be interesting to actually see overall what, you know, you expect to draw down to be on the debt over time. And then the other thing is something we talked about when I was serving on the Recreation Committee, which is, you know, eventually you have to start to think about 10 years down the road when you have to replace the rug.
Yep.
You know, it's not 3.5 million, but it's probably the better part of a million dollars, you know, is there sustainability for that as well? I mean, hopefully the user fees and a lot of those other recurring revenues will help cover that once the debt's retired. But I think it would be good to sort of see a comprehensive document and that's it.
Yep, very good, thank you.
Larry Bruce, Laurel Way. This wasn't my original point, but it just came up. When you just voted against the Sustainable Madison Ordinance, you used the word unfortunately.
Yes.
What did that add to the sentence?
Well, we, we, we don't, this is only comments, so it's not, you can't ask questions.
You can't query, you can't query a board member and you can't ask them, they vote however they feel is appropriate.
Thank you, Matt.
So my statement is I don't understand why somebody would vote against something and then say unfortunately. Another question that I guess can't get answered, but just clarification. I think Mr. Cody said that the difference between a 2% and a 4% tax increase would amount to $66 on a $750,000 valued home? Did I get that correct?
Basically, the budget that was approved tonight provides for a $66 tax increase for municipal purposes for that average assessed home, which is approximately $419,000. When you factor in our equalization ratio, that's a market value of about $750,000.
On the municipal side?
On the municipal, then added to that would be the county tax and the, the school tax. The schools did a very good job this year.
And my last question that I guess also won't be answered, so don't hear it as a question. I'm wondering if since the same people that voted against the budget also were on the same side of the Borough Administrator issue. I'm wondering if they would have voted differently if they would have gotten away with what they wanted to on the Borough Administrator issue. That's a statement.
So it's just a statement, it's just a statement.
It's a statement, we, we're not going to comment on it.
And just a, I don't think we have the full document that got posted, but it will be probably tomorrow. The budget brief, which was, disappeared for a couple of years, we have brought it back. And including a, a updated picture of a house that is far better than what we used to run, run there. And, and there's, and there are hard copies on the table, so you can grab a copy if you haven't grabbed one yet and go online.
It was on RoseNet too, wasn't it? Yeah, it was on RoseNet too.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Sam?
Sam Sercio in Madison, just a couple of questions about the, you know, the past, so to speak. My P P G and this construction, I'd just like to ask a few questions if I can get some answers. How are we doing with this Borough Hall as far as, I understand the architect and the, and the contractor, they still suing? Is everything finished here? Like a lot of old timers want to know why we talked about having a button that can open the door. Is that going to take place? I mean, you know, not only that, you know, and I, I keep saying that we have some kind of problems. We've got to tighten up on the construction. When I was, last year when I checked this Borough Hall, we had 531 items on the punch list. We, we have a problem and I'm trying to tell you people that we got to sort of tighten things up like we're trying to. But is this Borough still being sued? We had a boiler that, that has aged and they never looked into that. Is that being fixed? And then we had an oil tank in the back that should have been taken out. Was, where we stand with the Borough Hall as far as final payment for the contract, is there a suit going on? I mean, you got things like on the, on South Street, there's a water leak. They were supposed to put four inches of topsoil, they didn't. I mean, there's a lot of things going on, there's a lot of suits going on. Can, can you answer first about the Borough Hall? We got to get a push button in the front door, so, because you need two hands to open this front door when you come to this Borough Hall. And it was supposed to be some kind of a push button thing, that's a question.
I, I think we can, any other comments and then we'll, we can answer, give an update on the Borough Hall project. Or do you have any other comments before we just go into the, so I don't want to figure out your three, I have a hard time counting in time.
Another thing, you know, I, you know, I, again, I hate to be cruder, but I, I, I see a lot of things that I don't think are being done right. Are we being, are we being, getting the work that we're supposed to be doing on, on Rosedale Pine and Cedar up there? Is somebody watching to make sure these Belgium blocks are in there right and the mix on the joints? Because like for example, on Loveland, we just did them Belgium blocks not too long. The cement joints are starting to fall apart. Or is there somebody watching to make sure they put the right proper amount of sand in the bag of cement? Who's, who's our eyes up there to make sure we get our money's worth? That's, that's my next question. And my last thing is, you know, I've been refused before, this is my third time, third meeting. I have a friend of mine who's in construction all his life and myself in constru-. We'd like to be on this construction committee, which was my idea a year and a half ago. This is my last time I'm going to ask, if not, we're going to pull our names out.
All right. Your friend was already appointed, I can.
Well, he's not going to come, I told you until I.
I know, pack, package deal, but.
That's right.
Yep, all right.
So what questions are you going to answer first?
So we'll, we'll give an update on the Hartley Dodge, the, our resident who's keeping an eye on. eye on the Oak Knoll section, just gave a thumbs up that things are going well there, so we'll take that as a full report, and...
Is anybody, no, I don't take that as an answer. Is there somebody?
We, that's the engineer's responsibility, and we have oversight on the projects. Who's...
I'll answer. I live right in the middle of it, and I'll tell you right now, there's typically two people there, either the Borough Engineer or Desert. I forget the gentleman's name, but Dennis, he's always there.
Dennis Taras, he's not...
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, sorry, sorry. Thank you for the reinforcement, but, so we have, like, yeah, I appreciate it. So we have the projects being watched, so your time's up, so we'll get the Hartley Dodge update. Thank you.
Hartley Dodge, we are not currently involved in litigation. We're not suing anyone, no one's suing us. I don't know who you speak with, Sam, but the people that I interact with who come into the building think the building's gorgeous and are happy to be here, and I think it's a showplace, and it's the gem of Madison, probably the state of New Jersey. The boiler that you referred to, yes, needs work. It was not part of the original plan, the architect did not include it in the scope of work, and the price reflected that. Jim Burnett has been chasing some grants with the state, and we still have an open ordinance on this building, and if we fail on the grant, we will use those funds in the non-heating season to replace the boiler, and there's a little bit of asbestos removal that would be required, that can be done with us in residence, with no harm to the residents or to our employees. That's kind of where we are, but...
The front door is a challenge. I think one of the things to remind residents that the intended barrier-free entrance is the west wing door, and that is far easier to enter, there's no steps getting up to that door, and that gets you closest to the elevator. So while it's not ideal, and it's one of those challenges you have in trying to make a great building like this completely barrier-free, we had to make some concessions, we still would like to get that door working, but the fact it's a very solid door you can't see through, there is issues about the door opening up when someone's coming out, so we have to review all that. So I would, just spread the word to people that really have trouble coming through the front door, they should use the west entrance. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, close this section of the meeting, and move on to introduction of ordinances.
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for May fourteenth, two thousand twelve. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up Ordinance five, two thousand twelve for first reading, and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter one ninety-five, Article five of the Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, to amend the zoning map to include block twenty-eight oh three, lot two, which is 10 Maple Avenue in the R-three zoning district.
Mayor, I move Ordinance five, two thousand twelve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Council discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions are one zero nine, two thousand twelve, through R-one twenty-six, dash, two thousand twelve.
Second. Any that we need to pull? Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
No unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Okay, public safety, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, fifty-seven cents. Health and public assistance, sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, forty-four cents. Public Works and Engineering, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars, forty-seven cents. Community Affairs, one thousand, one dollar, fifty-eight cents. Finance and Borough Clerk, two million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, sixty-three cents. Utilities, one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seventy dollars, three cents. Total is four million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents.
I move the vouchers for approval.
Second. Discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?